Good evening and welcome to the second special meeting agenda, City Council Study Session Regarding the Budget, June 22, 2011. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sally Mark.
Here.
Mayor Ruwain.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Afara.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Item number two, Public Comment on Items Not on This Agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters in this form to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Any member of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Item three, Conduct a Study Session to Review the Recommended 2011/12 General Funds, Special Revenue Funds, and Enterprise Funds Budget. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, thank you for your second night in a row of walking through the fiscal year 2011/12 budget. As we discussed last night, we intend tonight to finish up the Special Revenue Funds and Enterprise Funds budget review with you, including one of our general fund departments that trails from last night, the Police Department. It's our intent tonight to walk through these presentations in a similar manner to the way that we did last night and that we've done in years before, and to take your questions as they arise. So please feel free to interrupt or insert your question at any time that it would be meaningful for you. In order to avoid a sort of a long and extended presentation by the Public Services Director for all of the utility enterprises, as well as the Public Services Department Administration and Engineering, we thought that we would start with one section, the General Fund Section of the Public Services Department, that's the Administration, Engineering, and Streets Division, I think, and then to move to completion of the General Fund with the Police Department and move back to the Enterprises and then, or the Utility Enterprises and then Cable. And I'll close with comments regarding the Equipment Reserve. Before I ask the Director to come forward, I wanted to call to your attention a spreadsheet that I think you have in front of you tonight. This was staff's compilation of the items that were discussed at last night's meeting and some where we could, we've provided some of the detail response to questions that you asked. Where you see that we've identified a due date of 6/28, we're expecting that the large majority of these items will come back to you with additional information at your meeting on June 28. I would just suggest for the council's comfort level that any of the items that you might wish to consider for addition or change to the budget, should you wish to take them under further review, let's say for example, consideration of the idea that was floated last night for developing an informational kiosk at Tanforin and perhaps at other locations. That might take you a little bit longer, may take us a little bit longer than Tuesday night in order to flesh that out, determine what the cost might be and whether you would like to include something like that in the budget. Assuming perhaps that you continue down that path and decide that you want to do it, that can always be included in the budget as an amendment. So do not feel that your interests have been precluded if some of these ideas are not, whether you don't, if you don't have as much time as you would like to review them prior to Tuesday night. Again, where you've asked a specific question and we have information that we can simply provide, we've done that on this spreadsheet, and unless you have questions about it, it was not our intent to review these in any detail, but we're certainly happy to take any questions either tonight or on Tuesday night or any time in between.
All right.
So with that, we ask the Director to come forward, unless you have questions right off the bat.
Any questions? Irene, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember. Clara, you're gonna need to put that very close to your mouth.
Very close.
Yeah.
I am very soft spoken.
Right.
Yes.
Can you hear Irene?
You can hear me.
She's not talking.
Do you hear Clara? Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. I have here with me Jim Shannon, who just ran out, who will help me with the development of the budget and also he will help each division to develop their own budget. And also I have here Wing Wong, the Deputy for Engineering. Unfortunately, Robert Howard is sacked today, but I have here Dennis Bush, who is the Service Manager for SUE, and I have here Mark Reinhardt, who is the Water Conservation Manager. As you are aware of, Public Services Department is responsible for providing overall transportation services to the residents of the cities, of the city, also to provide stormwater and wastewater services, also has the general, provide general support for fleet services administering, administering the central garage and also providing general engineering and capital improvement project management for city operation. Just a summary of all of the budgets for all of the divisions of Public Services, Administration and Engineering. In our budget description, those are separated, knowing that Administration has different function than Engineering, but in our budget, in the numbers, those are combined. And as you see, I don't, I don't want to repeat what the City Manager emphasized yesterday. Our budget development was based exactly on the same basic principle. Budget expenditure containment was one of the main goal of our budget development and for each division of the department, irregardless of that was a general fund but division or a enterprise division. Of course, then considering all of the other needs, then with the needed justification, what you will hear tonight, then those needed adjustments were made. The next general fund division is Streets or Transportation. Here you see a no change, in a sense, budget, exactly was the case under Administration and Engineering. The total general fund-based budget is very slightly increased versus, versus actually is little bit below the last year budget, the number of FTs is the same. For, as I said before, the main responsibility of the department is to manage all of the infrastructure systems and provide those services to our residents and to manage the transportation system. The overall focus for the next year of the whole department primarily will be on Glenview Neighborhood Recovery and Reconstruction, being, this will consume a major portion of our capacity in Engineering Division to properly support the recovery and the reconstruction of the Glenview Neighborhood. As you know, all of the major infrastructure was damaged or destroyed in the neighborhood and rebuilding that will require a major focus during the next year and probably for the next few years of our department. I will focus on, at this time, only just on general fund focus area for my department and I will raise a other long-term need which was raised by the Infrastructure Subcommittee to identifying strategies to improve the payment condition throughout the city. This was, this concern, this issue was discussed and raised as a potential focus area for us for, for the following year. I am including in my remarks and focus area acknowledging in the same time that I think our department will have limited, limited capacity next year to really focus on developing alternative for generating additional revenue for payment, for proper payment management throughout the city. For Street Department, the budget is pretty much a no change budget. Our budget from last year was maintained at the same level, is not included any new program in our street budget. Jim Shannon will give you a copy of the very detailed program description for all of our service area with the percentage of how much time of the staff is spent for those programs. Overall, you saw, if you can go back to show the transportation, the transportation funding sources, you saw this chart last year showing the overall revenue for transportation. As you see, the yearly revenue is around 2.6 now. I would just add some further clarification for the general fund maintenance effort, which was mandatory until last year. With the change of the color of the money last year beginning this year, this is not a mandatory requirement of local agencies to match state transportation money with general fund. This will be a policy choice for each, for you to make if you still want to allocate that general fund to support transportation funding. And also, the new revenue, Measure M, is the city has the flexibility, how much the city wants to spend on transportation and how much the city wants to spend on stormwater. Those policy choices needs to be made on ongoing basis. But the bottom line is that is a sustainable, ongoing transportation revenue shown here at 2.8 and our operation and maintenance budget is 1.2. That what really mean that is enough is the difference can be allocated for capital improvement Just summarizing the program focus, what you have on the handout also showing in a summarized manner how much of the total transportation fund is spent and on, estimated to be spent on capital improvement project and then on different type of maintenance And with this, I will let, if you have any question for Streets and Engineering at this time, and I will come back later for the Enterprise Services.
Any questions of the Director?
Yes, to the Chair. Clara, I didn't see anything, I thought we did use the Consultant for Traffic Safety and Parking Commission or the Traffic Designs. Is that all in-house now?
That was used this year, you are absolutely right. It's not included in budget at this time for next year.
So when I, when I see the new handout as sort of the duties of the, of staff is how, because I realize that that committee is, is, you know, has been pretty active in the last few years and how does staff intend on dealing with that? Sorry.
You say ongoing approach to assess on ongoing basis depending on the available capacity of the engineering, existing resources, depending on the type of the issue and the available, and the available resources will be made, the decision at that time if it's outside resource or outside support is needed or not. Was a higher consultant support needed this year until the new Associate Engineer for Traffic did not come on board. Now, the need for outside support for traffic engineering item is lower, but still will be ongoing need to have that consult, outside consultant expertise support for certain type of issues.
I don't want to get into it too detail, but I know, I mean, probably have some ideas on how we can ease, ease staff's workload on this. I, it just seems that they tend to, a lot of the projects, they tend to get really involved in them and come up with all these various designs and put a lot of time in it, only to find out that, you know, it's, it's not exactly what, you know, what the committee or what, what the City Council is looking for. So I think maybe we need to, you know, work maybe a little closer with the committee, and the council before it gets to that point. Now, that's just my con, because I didn't see it in the, in the, in the budget. As far as street, streetlight maintenance, I realize we have a contract, outside contract with, with traffic lights, with South San Francisco, I believe. So now we have, I'm aware of, I'm aware of a $89,000 maintenance contract for streetlights. Can you explain what that is? Is that just an existing, existing program or is there going to be some enhancements or some, some increased maintenance or improvements this coming year?
Until, two years ago, a private contractor provided us with stop sign, stop signal maintenance and two years ago, the decision was made to contract those services with South City for a $20,000, if I remember right, for a $20,000 cost savings for our budget. And that really was very, was a very good decision, actually, South City providing us higher level of services with less cost. It's not our intent to change the service level from the existing year to next year is basically no change line item.
No, I'm aware of that. I'm more concerned about the streetlight program.
The streetlight, the streetlight program is a no change, how is included in our budget right now. The city had this contractor on board for a few years now and is very, was, was pleased with services received, they are very responsive. Is our intent to address through a CIP project to advance this whole, to assess the need of streetlights throughout the city and to make recommendation of updating the whole system, but this, that is a CIP project and is not included in our operation and, in operation and maintenance budget. In the operation and maintenance budget is a no change item at this time.
Okay, so on the record, I just, I'm, I'm not satisfied with the, with what we're doing with streetlights. And if that's the program we have, maybe I can be convinced that 89,000 annually is enough to handle our streetlights, but I think we need to, whether it's a CIP or maybe it's just a little more enhanced service, I think we need, we need to, we need to get into that, you know, this year.
And thank you very much for your support. I think you are raising a very important issue.
We've talked about it.
Yes, absolutely.
We've talked about it many times, but we haven't taken that plunge yet. And I think that's, I mean, when's the good time? There's never a good time, you know?
Could I just clarify, there's a couple of different, there's maybe three different issues here. The first is bigger picture capital evaluation and replacement of the series circuit system where that exists in the city, which has been problematic for many years and which is very, very, very expensive. And I'm sure you'll remember that that is an item that we've carried in the capital budget that is not able to be funded at the current times. So we may want to consider that a little bit further. Second issue is the contracted service for ongoing day-to-day maintenance of the streetlights and responding to outages and that type of thing. I'm hearing that you may have some dissatisfaction with that and I want to understand that more clearly, but I want to jump to the third issue, which is, we have heard your interest about a better quality of lighting and the consideration of potentially the use of, I believe it's LED technology. And, and again, that would be something that, that is a bigger picture evaluation, but if there's specific issues about dealing with and responding to issues.
No, I'm not criticizing, no, I'm not criticizing our contract, our consultant. I'm not, I'm just saying that I feel the city's too dark. I think that it's antiquated and there's parts of the city that, if we can get better lighting, fine, if it's a matter of buying a new bulb and having that maintenance guy get up there and screw it in, maybe that's it. I realize that there's some infrastructure issues, but I don't want, I don't want to talk to an electrician on the street and say, you know what, we can do this and do this and this, you know, and we're not, we're not pursuing all the options. There might be some easy solutions and there may be some very complicated and expensive solutions, but I, I want to support something that will improve the lighting in our, the evening lighting in our community.
Was, two years ago, was done a, was developed a street light, a street system assessment study estimating the dollars needed to improve the system. Also, part of the recommendation was to develop a standard for the city, what kind of street light should be used in what area of the city and to come up with a overall desired standard for the city. Those are items which the city didn't make too much headway on going to the next step, addressing those very, very critical issues in my mind.
We hear your interest in moving that forward.
Thank you.
Rico?
Looking at the Administrative and Engineering, first of them, go to Streets, please. And don't need answers on everything, it can be, it can come back, but very quickly on page 140, Professional Development, it's up $500, which, I mean, it's per the MOU, but it would be helpful to have a number associated with that. So if it was $500 less last year, I'm assuming that's a staff person, but I don't know that because in last year it indicates per the MOU, Professional Development, and here it does, but there's a $500 increase. So I think not just within this, but throughout the budget, it would help to identify some places it is, some places it's not, as far as a particular number, so when referencing, we kind of, you know, have everything and we, we know. As far as the staff training, can you help me understand, there's two management training sessions to be held here, we have an $1,800 increase to that line item?
This is the only, probably the only one item, but really was increased slightly in Engineering and this is due to very high need for additional training in Engineering. Technology is changing, new regulation came in, the city is receiving more federal dollars than before. Those very high requirements has to be met and is very critical for the engineering, for the engineering staff to be able to be provided with some additional training on proper construction management, stormwater management, and how difference federal requirements can be met.
Okay, and then into the Streets, and this is not just for, for this line item, but it's kind of throughout the budget and we can come back and maybe it can be explained later, not, not this evening, but under how we allocate utilities. In this particular case, it's up $13,000, but in, throughout the budget, it's up, it's down, and these allocations, someone's going to have to maybe helpfully, hopefully help me better understand in the future how they fluctuate. I know Communications is one thing, Utilities is another, but that's just throughout the budget, not just specifically here, and that can be brought up later. Thank you.
Michael, anything?
I think Rico already talked to a couple of points, Rico already addressed a couple of the points I had, but specifically in Communications, it looked like that number increased quite a bit, and I don't know if that's strictly due to allocation or changes in the consumption of resources. So, I mean, if you have an answer to that.
Yes, would be my assumption that it's in, yes. Is Kim will address that from Finance.
Thank you.
Anything else? Irene?
I wonder, as we go through these, we keep hearing about the Glenview Fire and all the recovery and reconstruction that everyone's doing and all the efforts they're going to do. And I know we touched on it yesterday, as far as the City Managers work and the Fire Chief and all the things that they still have to do with that. Have, have we sat down, has anyone sat down and said, okay, here's all our needs, here's the structure of it, here's what we need to, here's what we're gonna have to do and, and we're gonna have to build P G E all these, with these things. I know we have lawyers that do certain things, I know we have contract out certain things, but have we sat down anywhere and, and said, this is how we're gonna solve this problem?
Irene, at the last council meeting, we approved a very large
Irene, at the last council meeting, we approved a very large amount of money for a consultant to actually evaluate infrastructure, specifically damaged infrastructure and what was going to be needed to rebuild the Glenview. So that's, that's a beginning, and we're looking at that closely. I think the issue that we have here is, every day we turn around, it's uncharted territory for us, but we're trying to get a handle on it, little by little, and that, that consultant amount that we approved at the last meeting is going to take a, take us a huge step forward. And we'll have more of these as, as we discover things that were going to be needed, but right now, we're not quite sure exactly what's going to be needed. I do know, and I believe the manager can explain, that everything that's, that's attributed to Glenview and the restoration and the rebuild is in fact coded separately, so it's all, all separately kept track of at this point in time. But as far as going forward, there are a lot of unknowns, and we're trying to address them as fast as, as fast as we can when they come up. City manager, you want to comment on that?
I just wanted to.
That, that really wasn't my question. I, I understand everyone's working really hard at it, and I, and I appreciate all the, everyone's efforts. I'm just wondering if, if we're, or if you all have sat and thought about, Clara probably spends a third of her time doing, a fourth of the time, a half of her time doing things for the reconstruction. With that, things that we want her to do don't get done, or they get done, it takes longer for them to get done, or she works, you know, eighty-five hours a week instead of sixty hours a week, or whatever she has to do. Our people are fabulous, our staff is wonderful, but they're going to burn out. And so I'm just wondering if people are saying, okay, we need five more bodies in engineering and this and that, that can take, that we can hand in the stuff to do. That's, because it's, it's a reoccurring theme throughout the budget. You know, we, we achieve these things, and then the next things we're going to do are these Glenview, Glenview, Glenview. I'm not saying we shouldn't, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm worried our staff's going to burn themselves out.
So, the answer is yes. There is work in progress to provide the city council with a comprehensive overview of what that looks like, what the needs are, and based on what we know now and what we anticipate for the future, what, where we are and where we think we need to get to in terms of adequately being able to meet the need, both with contracted staff as well as with the other types of resources that the mayor has indicated. So, so the short answer is yes, and we do intend a separate review and discussion with the city council on a, on a citywide basis.
Okay, good. I just, I worry about our staff, like I said, burning themselves out.
I would think the city manager worries equally, if not a little bit more, on that as well.
Your concern is warranted.
And thank you very much, Irene. I really appreciate.
Just don't get below sixty hours.
And to the city staff, just don't burn yourselves out, please.
Okay.
Any other questions, Irene?
No, I, I appreciate Ken's comments about the street lighting. I've been, I've pushed several years, for a long time, to have a capital improvement program with the street lighting, which is in place, so we'll, we'll get there. That, that's all, thank you.
If I can make just one additional comment to the street light, is that, just to prove how important this is for all of us. If you recall, one year ago, the department also went with a very well put together package asking for special federal funding also for improving the whole system. That effort wasn't successful yet, but yes, I think all efforts has to be refocused. Also, on this item, too.
What she's talking about is an earmark request through, I believe it was Senator Boxer's office, and so it was a very large number and not viewed in the grander scheme of federal priorities to be the thing that needed to be funded, but it is, it is not off the radar screen and it's not done yet, so.
I mean, it's, it's a quality of life deal.
Yes.
It's, it's safety, it's, you know, the residents will feel better, and if it is a capital improvement, if it is something that we have to pass on to the residents, I think that's something we can sell to them.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of Rick Watson, who's, without his work, this budget would have been very difficult to put together. The police department proposal before you tonight reflects our efforts to contain costs and reduce expenditures wherever possible. As stated in the city manager's letter, efforts to reduce expenditures started several years ago, and like many other departments, we accomplish this through staff reductions. Last year, the department handled over twenty-nine thousand calls for service, including self-initiated activity. This was down about a thousand calls from the previous year. Reduction in personnel over the years has limited our community policing efforts, including the ability to handle calls involving quality of life issues such as animal complaints, lab parties, and other chronic neighborhood-generated complaints that are generally noncriminal in nature. We still handle these, but it's a little more labor-intensive, it's a little more delayed response. We do, however, maintain our school resource officer who is responsible for the majority of the hundred and ninety calls for service that were generated between Cappuccino High School, Peninsula High School, and Parkside Middle School. That officer also is a valuable resource to the school administrators handling truance issues and other potential noncriminal-related matters. The goal with that school resource officer is crime prevention with, with our youth. Department continues to adjust our resources to address any emerging crime trend or pattern. Last year, we once again established a team of officers to address criminal street gang activity in our community. The overtime expended for this effort was obtained through grant funding. Over the past two years, we were able to use grant funding to offset our crime lab expenditures. This year, we will not receive that grant, and this has resulted in a net increase of twenty-one thousand dollars to our county service fees, and this covers our annual anticipated expenditures for crime lab services. We applied for and received grant funding from the California Office of Traffic Safety that helps us keep our roadway safe. We continue to receive a significant number of traffic complaints from our residents, and as the city manager mentioned in her letter, the funding that we normally receive, cops funding, that is in serious jeopardy this year. That money goes to offset our lone traffic officer. Our traffic officer is included in the budget this year, however, those funds from the grant are not included. The state also appropriates funding for prisoner bookings in the county jail. If this funding is not received from the state, the department could face an additional expenditure of a hundred and forty thousand dollars in arrestee bookings. This comes at a time when the state is trying to relieve the overcrowding in state prisons with the U.S. Supreme Court mandate that California reduce its prison population. This could realign possibly up to four hundred offenders back to the county system and provide early release of convicted nonviolent offenders back to our streets. Just to give you an idea, in the last twelve months, we've arrested thirty-eight people for parole violation. Department will continue to participate in regional efforts to reduce crime. We temporarily deploy our officers to the county gang task force, and last year, we had an officer assigned to the gang intelligence unit as well as the county narcotics task force. As you know, we receive partial reimbursement for these positions. Both of these officers have returned back to patrol as their assignments ended, and just as a reminder, every city in San Mateo County contributes either an officer or pays a predetermined amount for the narcotics task force. We hope to assign an officer to the narcotics task force in September of this year. We continue to explore the possibility of shared services with the city of Millbrae in an effort to enhance our ability to provide services to the community. Last year, we shared police chief services with the city of Millbrae, and as this year, we recently received a completed study and look forward to bringing the results of that study to the city council in the coming weeks. But as we had the completed study, we did not include half of those police chief services in our revenue this year. With the two recent retirements in the department's command ranks, we are presently reviewing our operations and existing command staff structure to provide career development that will enhance future succession planning while maintaining quality control of our frontline services that we deliver to the community. The department continues to maintain commendable response times for emergency calls. Nowhere was this more evident than at the scene of the Glenview fire. We were there in a matter of minutes. We were there, and the first officer was there to assist residents in that tragedy. We continue to partner with all city departments to assist in the recovery efforts, and we maintain our participation in the investigation as to the cause of that explosion. San Bruno continues to be a safe community, and each member of the department continues to provide quality service, as evidenced by high ratings from those who returned our customer service surveys. We'll continue to manage our resources, and our mission of providing safety to this community is paramount. That concludes my presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of the chief? Rico?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, looking at, on page one-ten, tools and equipment, line item six-six-five-oh, it spells out, you know, there are two radios and then there's fifty-four hundred dollars for tasers.
Yes.
Could we, through the finance department, just number how many that is? One, five? That would be appreciated, just so we know. Going into the next page, professional development, here's a great example where it is spelled out, department head and twelve mid-management employees at sixty-five hundred dollars. Last year, the same verbiage applied and it was at six thousand. So I don't know if that, if that's just an error, or the five hundred should have gone to the tuition, but if we could look at that, please. And you alluded to the hundred thousand dollars as a retained in the budget, but without the revenue, because obviously it's in jeopardy. So in essence, if, if, to the city manager, if in your message, we're at three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand dollars in a deficit, a hundred thousand of, a hundred thousand of that is to maintain the traffic officer. So in essence, is that correct?
Yes.
Sure.
Sure.
Let me have this one.
Yeah, no, no, yes, yes, yes.
So in essence, we might only have a deficit if we were to get the state funding of two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, potentially.
That's correct.
Okay. With the jeopardy of that, where are we at, chief, as far as, you already mentioned the two commanders that have retired? What other folks or positions need or are being looked to fill, be filled in the department that are left?
Well, currently, we are, yeah, currently, we are examining the command staff structure, and those are the first two immediate positions that we are moving to fill.
I think the council member is interested. Do you have any other vacancies in the department right now?
Thank you.
We do not have any other vacancies that we are currently, or we don't have any additional vacancies in the department. We do have a one sergeant position that is assigned to the NTSB investigation, and we continue to evaluate the use of his time and his long-term use in that investigation. And I continue to have conversations with the city manager. If it looks like we are in a position or we need to backfill that position, I will bring that to her attention and we'll move forward from there.
Okay, and so, just so we're on the same page, so it says here, personnel summary is sixty-two. You're saying sixty of those are currently filled, two are not, which are the two command positions?
Correct.
Okay, and, and with the exception of obviously the sergeant, whose time is being spent, the NTSB and the Glenview situation.
We heard you say a number that I, I believe there is a misprint in the budget, and I believe the total number of authorized staffing is fifty-nine.
Okay, sorry.
I don't think you.
I was reading the budget, I'm sorry.
I don't know that you misspoke. I believe that there may be an error in the way it's printed, but the total authorized staffing for the department is fifty-nine.
Okay, I follow. So fifty, well, that's what I was reading, but thank you. So fifty-nine currently, fifty-seven, okay.
Right.
And those added positions were part, were part-time positions. Bring that number to sixty-two.
Okay. So we're all right.
I got it again? Wow, two for two. This is a good note, we should do it now.
All right, meaningful. Ken, anything?
Chief, I'm very pleased with, with the department and all the things, all the programs that are ongoing, especially the gang task force. Please tell me that no news is good news, that, you know, that we don't, since we don't hear anything about gang activity, that we, you know, we have it somewhat underhand, controlled. But any, I know what's challenging is that any type of enhancement that we want would mean, you know, looking at your, you know, understaffed department. My question is, regular crimes, it's just, I mean, tell me about what your feeling is about just regular crimes. Are we experiencing, experiencing a slight, an increase in vehicle burglaries? I see, you send us, the city manager forwards the police blotter, and every day, every week, there's, you know, there's the break-ins, you know, parking lots, either at Tan Fran or up at the college or something. Maybe that's not a, a physical presence or maybe a police officer necessity, but have we thought about maybe doing a, you know, public relations program or something to get out there and, you know, make people more aware?
Yes. So to answer the first portion, yes, we are participating in the gang task force that is currently out as we speak. Gang violence always is a concern and always is a threat to our community. I believe we have it at hand and we want to continue to have it at hand, but that gang task force is taking weapons off the street, not necessarily in San Bruno, but throughout the county. And we are continuing to see weapons, including firearms. So that will continue to be a concern. In terms of crime, we have experienced a recent rise in vehicle burglaries and a recent rise in vehicle thefts. We're not unlike any other community in San Mateo County, and other cities are experiencing a similar increase. We have our citizens' crime prevention committee. They have put out a cable message on vehicle burglaries for this month, and I saw it recently on cable TV. We are working with the shops at Tan Fran and working with their security to increase presence. We do our best to investigate those crimes because they trouble us to an extreme degree. And we will take your suggestions on community relations and look at maybe some additional press releases.
Because people just, they're, they're busy, and they don't think. They just leave their car and they forget that they might have left their laptop in the backseat or something, you know, when there are, you know, illegal businesses out there scanning all the parked cars and, you know, looking, and lo and behold, it's gone, you know, and then, then you lose a customer, too, at a, you know, at a shopping center. So I think maybe those businesses, Tan Fran, I mean, we need to take the lead with the police and just say, this is what we suggest you do, you know, as maybe a pilot program or something, you know, and, and not accept the fact that this is what's happening in every city. Let's, you know, let's take the lead and say, we're going, we're going to do something about it as far as helping our, our shoppers or helping our students, you know, stay away from getting ripped off. Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you. I don't think I heard an answer to the question about what's going on with the, with the gangs. And I think there is a larger investment in, in gang investigation training in this budget versus last year. So is there a trend one way or the other?
Right, right now, I don't want to tell you that the, right now, there are, the trend is that, that it is relatively low activity. And I think it's low activity because of the efforts of the gang task force, because of the efforts that we put out when we gather up a team of officers and go simply to address it. And once you think you have it at bay, then another incident occurs. San Bruno is a safe community. Yes, there is gang activity. Right now, that gang activity is at hand, but it doesn't take much for it to spark up.
Okay. And I also noticed that the technology budget is, it's modest, but possibly growing, and I understand that there might be newer tools that become available to your department that help make the officers more efficient and help you do your job better. I'm wondering if, if you weren't... I'm wondering if, if you weren't limited by, by our budget, would there be other systems that are available to other departments that you would be interested in, in pursuing?
We, we continue to explore those systems. Coming up in the, the next month, we have a new system that will go in one of the patrol cars that was obtained through a grant. We'll be testing that system. There are records management systems used throughout the county that we will look at and explore and maybe look at purchasing in the future. It may make us a little more efficient and it will put us on the same system as the majority of other agencies in this county and will streamline our operations. That's one of the avenues that we're looking at with the shared services with the City of Millbrae and that records management system. So, to answer your question, yes, there are systems, yes, we're looking at them, and yes, if they are feasible, we will bring them, we'll bring them forward.
Okay, thank you.
Irene, Irene?
I'm good, thanks.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Rick. We'll see you next year.
My next division is the Central Garage. The Central Garage mainly a no, no change budget also. If you recall, last year, a point six FD reduction was implemented and moved to Stone Water is this year, the proposal is to add, to make some minor improvement of our heating system and also some very important safety improvement for the lubrication delivery system. Our focus right now on, on Central Garage is taking the opportunity of a existing open position to analyze the possibility of some kind of combination of shared services either with the City of Millbrae or City of South San Francisco. Is, the analysis is still going on and after the conclusion of that analysis, then the department will make a recommendation to the City Manager either to implement any of those feasible solutions or to go out and to field the position. Any question on Central Garage?
Anything?
Through the chair. I know you said everything was pretty much the same and my understanding is there's obviously 3.95, or I'm sorry, 3.35. Last year's overtime was $1,000 and it's up $500 for, to $1,500. So, that to me was a significant increase considering the amount and the allocation of staff. On 6204, Supplies and Equipment, it is $10,000 less and appreciate that. Last year, to the Finance Department, it was spelt out as each one of these items, the cost breakdown. I'd like to see that done, if that's possible, as last year. Under Contract Services, I see this as a new line item, 6411. Is that correct or? I didn't see that last year, I just want to make sure I'm right, or could be wrong.
It's the same, it's, it's just quite differently. I will follow up and I will-
I think last year it was under Operations and not under Contract Services, but I think it was there.
Vice Mayor's correct. It was, last year it was under Office Equipment Maintenance, there's $100,000 and now it's contractual services, I guess. So, okay, that helps explain that. And I think that's it.
Okay, Michael?
The one thing that I noticed in this budget was the gas and oil allocation was actually down. I think everybody else saw an increase in that. This one went down. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't an error.
Those allocation were done by the Finance Department.
Okay.
And I will-
Those ends was, was done, the allocation by the Finance and probably they will provide the answer.
We set all the gas and oil budgets for this coming year to be exactly equal to what the projected actual is for this year. So, some of them went up, some of them went down, but they're based on what we project to be the year's actuals.
Okay. And I suppose the same is true with Utilities, because that was the other one that was dramatically down.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, there was one, I just left, 6702 Publications and Subscriptions. One of my things is if we could please detail those so we know, other than it's, it clumps everything together, Subscriptions and Equipment Repair Manials, Shop Key Online Repair Manual. So, if we could identify where the, how the $3,000 is being spent, I would appreciate it.
Irene?
I have nothing. You, I didn't hear the explanation from the, from Kim.
The, the gas and oil budget for next year is set exactly equal to what we project this year's actuals to be. So, in some cases, budgets went up and some went down, but across the board, there was an increase overall.
Okay, okay, thanks.
All right, next.
Next division is Solid Waste. In Solid Waste budget, they are, the department is not proposing any major change. Will, it is our intent this year to investigate the possibility of some collaboration and shared services for sustainability-related item with the City of Millbrae. If you have any question on Solid Waste.
Any questions?
Through the chair. On Community Promotions, it spells it out, it's very explicit. I know we, we had that last year. Does the Finance Staff know how much of that we spent last year? Get back to me, if that's okay, if that's permissible. Thank you.
Any, anyone else, Irene?
No, I'm good, thanks.
All right.
I will go to the next division is Water Enterprise. For the following services, water and sewer, I just want to emphasize in the beginning that you provided ongoing and very constant and sustained leadership in the last few years to really set the expectation for the department to make the needed investment in our water and aid very fast aging water and sewer system and stone water system to really meet the long-term need of the community. In the last few years, the city invested a very high dollar amount in our capital improvement program. Also, you proved this consistent leadership, approving two years ago, the 10, based on the 10-year financial projection, the city commitment to replace, in essence, the main portion of sewer and water infrastructure in the next 25 years. This budget for water and sewer both really reflect that ongoing direction and expectation that the council set consistently in the last few years. For, for the water, our, already implemented focus and direction already was implemented and you see no major change just from the last year budget. What you see in, in our water budget, the main impact really is the water purchase price from PUC, which our expectation or prediction when this budget was developed at that time was that the increase will be 50%. At the end, after many, many comments PUC received, the increase which will take place will be 37% and that $469,000 already reflect that adjusted cost increase for next year, which is a different number than what you have in your budget document. Is order minor cost increases for $10,000 for professional services. This intends to pay for the update of our rate model and rate study. The three-year approved rate we land at the end of this year and this fund, using this fund is our intent then to update the model and to make recommendation for the next rate period. $45,000 is just increase in contract services for pump and generator maintenance and $16,000 for parts and supplies. Our conservation, water conservation programs are very popular and you see the continuation in our proposal, the continuation of those conservation programs. Those were my highlights and if you have any question for water.
Any questions?
Through the chair. On the Water Supply Division, help me understand, the way I'm reading this, its allocation is 5.5 employees. And I know this, this is probably gonna take a comeback, so I'll understand better, but if I'm, because then there's 12.5 in the Water Distribution Division. So, if I go with that, obviously it equals the 17. There's $98,000 of overtime in the Water Supply Division, which was the same as last year. So, is that to say that out of the 5.5, that's paid to those individuals for other work that's done under the MOU? That's kind of the question. And how much of that was used from the last budget? Turning the page to page 368, Parts and Materials, I know this was up, $16,000 probably needed. Professional Services, it's $50,000 and they had the ground monitoring and analysis, but there were also, last year, for $50,000 as well, there were also water studies that were included in that description. There's no water studies, but the cost item is the same.
What page you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on page 368, line item 6401.
Yes.
The contractual services are up $15,000 and I believe going down to Other Services, we have the Computer Maintenance Management System, which I think we were told is gonna be now an annual cost for the, the continuation of that system. Okay. Going to the next page on 369, Professional Development, if we can just indicate how many persons that includes. And under Community Promotion, 6502, like to know how much was spent out of that of last year. On Publications and Subscriptions, if we could spell out the cost of $300, if that's possible, if it's just the one item costs 300, that's fine. And then, under Meetings and Conferences, it says Managers to Attend the 2010 American Waterworks Association. And is that for two staff members or, or three?
Two staff members.
Thank you.
Are we doing Water Distribution too?
Is, are you also taking care of Water Distribution at this time too?
Yes.
Okay. If I, if I may switch to that. I just noticed in some of these descriptions, for example, on 6109, Parts and Materials, it's the same verbiage as last time, Building and Ground Supply, same verbiage, not saying it's not needed, but it's, it's identical to last year's. So, I don't know if that's a, a regular annual occurrence or we spend all the monies from those accounts. And then, what I also noticed in the Contract Services, the Update Water Rate Model, I guess is new, that's an additional $10,000. There's a $28,000 increase in the Contract Services and of course, the, some maintenance and the other services. And going to page 379, again, if we can just cost out the Publications and Subscriptions, the Meetings and Conferences. And I, that's enough. Thank you.
Michael?
If I, if I might, on the Overtime, one of the handouts that we gave you tonight shows the breakout of overtime by division in the Public Works Department. And if I'm understanding your question correctly, you're looking for that to be further broken out as to amount expended in the prior year. You're looking for the additional detail for the supply versus the distribution subdivisions?
Yeah, I think that's correct. And I didn't have an opportunity just getting tonight to, to really digest that. But I guess, because if you look at, there's a staff allocation of 5.5 and that's at $98,000. You look at the next division, it's an allocation of, let's say, 12.5 and that's at $40,000. It just looks-
You, you want to understand what are the activities that would be driving such a high level of associated per capita overtime?
And if that's being utilized every year, that's correct.
Right. So, in terms of the utilization and the actual expenditure history, we've given you some information. We'll further break that down and then we'll provide the additional information having to do with the, how overtime is typically or what are the majority uses, reasons for overtime?
I appreciate that and I certainly will review the document and may answer some of the questions, but thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else on Water? Irene?
No, thanks.
Okay.
I will go to the next division, which is the Stone Water. The Stone Water budget is, has a slight increase versus last year, no change in personnel. The new regional stone water permit is in effect beginning last year. As a result of new regulation, additional trash capture devices needs to be installed, is much more rigorous standards need to be implemented for private development and also inspection will be, needed to be implemented for the stone water treatment facilities at the large development. Already, additional work was done at the courtyard facility to meet this new requirement and also is a increased requirement for reporting activities which take some additional time of our, has a impact on our resource level. But our stone water master plan is nearing completion. The department will be able very shortly to come back to the Subcommittee first and also to the full council with alternatives and recommendation on CIP project for, for stone water, for, for the improvement of our stone water system. And as part of the master plan also, you will have some more, much more information on finan, financial need to meet the system improvement need in long term. It's my expectation that in about three months- It's my expectation that in about three months, the master plan will be almost finalized and those information will be available for us to start that dialogue with you to, to develop a alternative which you will feel comfortable to implement for the stormwater master plan. One additional new item was included in our budget this year is a additional seven thousand dollar, additional seven thousand dollar for the geotechnical consultant services. This new item was included in our budget as a new item, as a result of the need this year after the heavy rains, the department needed to, to make additional assessment for certain slope area of additional protection was needed. That's why proactively the department is proposing to include a seven thousand dollar to be able to have that outside expertise support if is necessary. That would conclude my comments on stormwater division and if you have any question.
Any questions?
Sure, this, this will be quick. I'm not, I won't mention about the, doing the cost out, I'll just bring that up after the meeting, just to kind of speed it up. I just noticed under other, other services, uniform cleaning, it's gone from a thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's a real big jump for cleaning uniforms. I don't know if, what that entails. I just know if our vendor has increased that large, that quick. Maybe we need to go out and look at a bid. Also, last year, there was disposal of material, fifteen hundred dollars allocated, which is not listed this time. Is that something that we still need or, or is that why it was removed, or is that just to make sure that wasn't left out?
I will follow up on those items to make sure that the disposal cost maybe just was included in another line item. And certainly I will follow up on the reason why the cleaning, the uniform increased with that much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Irene?
Comments? On page four oh, I think it's nine, talks about the sandbagging and we've talked about this before, that we give out sandbags to people. At one point in far past, I'm sure, we asked that the sandbag, where the sandbags went to be kept track of. I don't think that ever got done, it was well before Clara's time. I'm wondering Clara, if it makes any sense to do that. My thought behind it was to find out where people were experiencing flooding and if there was something that we needed to know about it, to do about it. Sometimes people don't tell us when things happen, they just come get sandbags and go away. So I don't know if it's worth keeping track of that, but I'd like some kind of yes or no, or, because if it's no, then I'll stop bringing it up every year and if it's yes, maybe we can get something done. The other part of that with the stormwater and the study, I cannot remember if it includes anything beyond our boundaries with Cupid Row Channel and the Seventh Avenue Channel. I know the airport does some of the work. I know they put the goats out there and the goats eat the, some of the brambles and keep some of that clear. I know the airport did some work, but if you happen to go across San Bruno Avenue and you look north on the Seventh Avenue outfall there, and you can see that there's literally islands in the, the channel bed, when we have a rainfall, a lot of rainfall this coming year, it's going to be blocked. I'm worried about it backing, the floodwaters backing up into the Bel Air area. So if you could adjust those two items, that'd be great.
About the sandbag, I think just to have a general understanding, who really needs the sandbag and I think is valuable to us. And I will follow up with Gino, but I think Gino has a very good, I am assuming that, I am pretty sure that Gino has already a very good sense, what is the demand area, what area really has a high demand on sandbag. And those information may, has relevancy more now than ever, to make sure that our stormwater master plan really reflects who are the problem area in the city. So I will, I will follow up and I will make sure that even what information, even if it's not formal information about those sandbags, will be related to the consultant and to make sure that is incorporated in the knowledge base of the stormwater master plan. And also I will see if makes sense and how that can be man, well, in my opinion makes sense, but then I will follow up how is, what is the easy way to, to monitor that, without to complicate too much and just what is the easy way just to see where those sandbags go. On the second issue that you raised, our stormwater master plan does not specifically include any, the outside area of our stormwater system, but acknowledge the interdependency between our system and the special district, that those two system is actually functioning as one system and they are interdependent and interrelated. And Sematow County is on the task force for the stormwater management plan, working in concert with us to make sure that our proposed CIP program is correlated with the need of the special district also. And is our intent to come back with a joint recommendation of the need for the special district and also for our own system. In that regard, is, your concern can be included and raised as part of our discussion in, with Sematow County.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good.
Chair, this coming year's, one of the goals is to locate and document privately owned valley gutters. It's not a, there's not a dialogue on that in the staff report or anything, but do we not know, or what information do we know and what do you propose to do? Because every year I get a notice saying to clean out my valley gutter and I'm very far from a valley gutter. So I don't know what the city does.
This is a, a important issue, what you are raising. As you recall, I think was no budget process then, or in many instances, certainly with any CIP budget discussion, always this issue of improving our information system and how much focus really is improving our overall information system in all of those enter, system, enterprise area for water sewer and stormwater. And if you recall me saying probably already a few times, that is huge investment went in the improvement of the overall information available for those three system. And water is doing, is ninety-five percent probably, wastewater is behind them and storm, stormwater is at the bottom.
Way behind.
Way, way at the bottom and transportation is between, little bit above, but certainly storm is at the bottom. Now with the stormwater master plan update, this was one of the focus stated from the beginning, to really improve our knowledge on our own system. Now, the valley gutters are not owned by the city and a, some efforts were made a few years back to try to survey all of the valley gutters privately owned and to remind them their obligation before the rainy season to maintain them. Unfortunately, our system is not, is just, our information is not reliable. Is, our intent to really address this as a system-wide issue. Right now, what the department is doing to address this, as they will come up and to try to do our best to clarify in a certain given area, just to make sure our maintenance will go out and to check actually if those valley gutter are still there and then before those letters go out. But so far, our approach was that better to send out more letters than less letters, even if it is known by us that our information is just not reliable, is not good enough.
Yeah, I think just what Irene's talking about, sandbags and, you know, and it's not a cloud in the sky right now, but I think it's prudent to at least start the information gathering and I think that's a good, good goal for this coming year.
Anything else? Okay, next.
My last item, and I am very, I am pretty sure that you are very sorry that this is my last item. I, I can make so fond presentation and I never bore you to that.
But it's, it's, it's the juiciest one.
I appreciate, this is, and yes, you are absolutely right, this is the easiest one.
Juiciest.
Is, I will translate on my language, it's the easier one. Is the wastewater enterprise fund. I already stated the generalized action before my discussion on water system budget. I will not repeat now with the wastewater, basically our approach was exactly the same for wastewater, but our approach was on water. I just want to remind you, some facts in the beginning before I will share some of the highlights of the wastewater budget. And the fact is that even if, how I stated, under your leadership, many huge steps were made in the right direction, still in wastewater is a long way to go. And what you have before you is the number of SSO, SSOs in this area and how you can see that San Bruno even is very high in compared with other agency around us. And even, I don't have that information with me, but is very high in the whole state. It's not just here in our own area, but it's very high in the state also. In the last few years, already the result of your implemented policies and strategies showed clearly a result of slight decline and shows a clear decline in the number of SSO. Still is very high compared with who the city will, will need to be. Reason why our recommendation on wastewater is, includes the biggest change among all of the divisions in, in the department, how you can see. Our wastewater budget includes a total one point two million increase to our budget this year, of which eight hundred fifty is increase in operating and maintenance budget and about one million in CIP budget. You don't see, if you are looking at only just comparing this year budget with last year budget, you don't see that big number of eight hundred fifty reflected there. But the only reason why you are not seeing that big number there is that was included this year in our budget, the placeholder of expected expenditure for the, for our jointly own treatment plan. And those improvements or of the treatment plan will not start until two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen. That mean that had a reverse impact on the overall budget, but nevertheless, the net increase on operation and maintenance activity for, in this proposal is around eight hundred fifty thousand. And going, going, and this proposal, the eight hundred fifty does not include the cost of one additional associate engineer position, which is recommended and requested by us to be included in our budget, but how the city manager pointed out yesterday, was not included in the existing budget document. The cost of that additional associate engineer position would be one hundred twenty-two thousand dollar. The purpose of including this position in this proposed budget is the high demand and the increased need to increase our spot repairs and sewer replacement project next year. And the spot repair and the main replacement really require technical, ongoing technical support and technical expertise. And this position, additional position will enable us to have a clear focus on sewer, sewers need and to have the ongoing support for replacing those portion of the sewer main which need to be replaced and also for any spot repair, to have the technical expertise what our operation and maintenance division needs. To further, to further highlights what exactly is included in the eight hundred, if you can go to the next slide, please. What is included in that eight hundred fifty thousand is divided in two difference area. One, one is more human related and the other more hardcore infras, improvement related. Is three hundred twenty-five thousand for increasing our contract for spot repair. I already mentioned how, how important will be for us to increase the investment in and to replace or remain as needed. Twenty-four thousand for smart manhole covers, twenty thousand for chemical root control, which will be a improvement of our existing program. Additional fifteen thousand for... Additional 15,000 for our fog program and additional 5,000 for tools for the vector. This maintenance, what will really, will, will be necessary to implement a change in our wastewater division, how the maintenance activity is conducted. This major change will not take place without equal investment in our employee to make sure that they have the tools, the training, the knowledge in order for them to be able to make that change and to get to the desired outcome. Reason why you see a investment in our human capital also of the sewer division. 15,000 will be dedicated to implement best management practice. 30,000 to update our sewer system management plan and also around 45,000 to conduct additional organizational assessment and to, to implement and to support the division for efficiency, efficiency improvement strategies needed to be included in our ongoing operation and maintenance in sewer. And the last item is a 386,000 dollar estimated payments to others. This, this will conclude my presentation at this time. And if you have any question.
Any questions?
On wastewater.
Rico.
Just start getting him out of the way. Just again, a helpful understanding of the overtime would be one. Looking under operation supplies on page 394. There's uniforms listed there, which is fine. You know, it was there last year. But down at the bottom under other services at 6419, there's uniform cleaning and replacement. So I'm not sure if it's two sets of uniforms or what that might be. But also under the uniform cleaning and replacement, that's up $2,000. So I don't know if it's for the cleaning aspect, if it's for the uniforms. Under, going back up the page to 6202, street repairs and supplies, it's the same amount as last year. But it also included 15,000 for material and repairs for manholes. So I'm then understanding the debris removal has gone up $15,000 is how I would interpret that, just, just for clarity. I think you've covered very adequately the contract services. And obviously, this division, the way I'm looking at it, is up about 832,000. 386, as you recall, are obviously being paid for others and other services that were required to. Under communications, even though, as we said, that goes up and down, it, it says that office telephone chargers, anyway, it says 12 mobile phones, pagers, radios. So does that mean because we have each one of the staff maintains one of those? Then my other question was, are we really still using pagers much anymore? And I, I don't know, because obviously nowadays you tell anybody that, they'll think we're behind the times. So I'm, I was just curious more than anything on that. I think that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good chair.
Michael.
One, one quick question, not really on the budget, but on the slide that you showed us about the SSOs. There's about 50 data points on there. What, what other cities are included in that? Is that?
In the Bay Area, I, I can provide you with that additional information in this whole Bay Area that, but exactly which city is which. But it's my, my, this information is this for the Bay Area.
They're all Bay Area cities.
Supposed to include all of the series who provide information to the regional board.
Okay, thank you.
Irene.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, and you're good.
I am good.
You're good.
Thank you very much.
Honorable mayor, members of city council, good evening. It is my pleasure this evening to provide you with a summary of the cable television budget for 2011, 12. The cable television department comprised of three divisions. Cable television division, which is San Bruno Municipal Cable TV. Local origination, which is San Bruno Cable Channel One. And, and also the technology support division of the, of the city. The cable television department has 23 employees. There are 18 employees in the cable operation, one employee in the local origination. And there's, there are three employees in the technology support division. And my time is shared between cable operation and the local origination operation. We also have about five to seven part-time temporary employees in the local origination division that help out at city meetings and et cetera, like Owen is doing here this evening. If you look at the slide on the, on the, up there, you will notice that between 2009, 10 and 10, 11, we had projected growth in cable revenues about nearly almost a million dollars. And that projection was based on our assumption that we were going to grow basic cable subscribers that year. We were also going to be launching our commercial services. What we had not anticipated was that AT&amp;T would be, would have completed, aggressively completed its rebuild, upgrade of its infrastructure in the, in San Bruno. And that they would be conducting a very aggressive marketing campaign in terms of gaining market share in the area. So that really had a huge impact on us. As you see the budget for 11, 12, where we have actually scaled back the terms, in terms of our revenues projected for 11, 12. The revenue, the revenues that are being projected for 11, 12 more accurately reflect the, what has transpired in, in the current year. So the, these numbers are more accurate and more reliable on a going forward basis. As, as I've mentioned, the, the city council that also approved doing a door-to-door campaign in 2010, 11, which we conducted. You know, as you're already aware, the campaign was not as successful given the fact that we had a very weak offer. And subsequently, the city council authorized a revision to the campaign. And recently, we launched a direct mail campaign that involved postcards. And so far, we have sent three different postcards out. And as of the recent tally, we've generated 284 sales out of that, that activity. And of that, 190 of them are video customers. 92 are internet and two phone customers. So this campaign has been more successful than the one that we had originally conducted through the door-to-door sale campaign. I think it has a lot with the offer that we had out on the table. So basically, what I want to say is, I mean, competition seems to continue to be a huge impact on our business. And I wanted to prepare some slides going forward to kind of give you some historical perspective of the competitive environment and the impact that it has on our business and what we have done to respond to the competitive environment. And if you notice that slide, it kind of shows you what our competitor's subscriber growth has been over the last 15 years. In 1995, you know, DirecTV is the only satellite competitor in the area. And back then, we were the incumbent cable TV provider in San Bruno. And we had no competition except for satellite from DirecTV. But as you notice over the, over the next 15 years, you've seen the DirecTV and Dish Network grow tremendously. Each, you know, combined having 35 million customers, nearly 35 million customers. And if you now notice in 2007, 8 timeframe, you know, you have this little red blip there with AT&amp;T coming in. So they started around 2007, 8, and that's exactly where we started feeling some impact in our own market from additional competition as AT&amp;T is in our backyard. So right now, there are about 3 million customers nationwide. So this is kind of gives you what's, what these competitors are doing on a nationwide basis in terms of growing their business and is having a huge impact on our business as well from a video competition perspective. And then I'll, the next slide kind of shows you a subscriber composition of our, of our business. Essentially, if you look at 97, 98, we were just a cable TV company. We had basic and expanded cable services. And it presented 100% of our, our revenue base, subscriber base as well. But as you look over time, we have really diversified products to, to actually combat the competition and also to ensure the viability of our enterprise as well. So if you look at today, just the basic component only represents less than 50% of our business. And the other 50% is made up of other, other products and services. Basically, we have not only diversified our products vertically, but also diversified horizontally. Vertically in the sense that we've expanded our video offerings from not only just basic cable TV offering. We have including providing digital cable TV. We're providing sports subscription packages, video and demand service, et cetera. And on a, on a horizontal level, we've expanded into internet services over time, phone services to the residential community. And most recently, we have deployed commercial services to the business community. So that's how we've sort of expanded and diversified our product. The next slide, please. The next slide shows you essentially these different components, revenue components. You know, back in 97, 98, combined basic and expanded cable was 23,000 revenue generating units. That's what I'm keep talking about, the revenue generating units. Each of these different service components provides some source of revenue. So if you look at over the last 11 years, despite the fact that we've seen a decline in, in basic cable subscribers, we've overall grown our revenue generating units over time. So at the height of our growth, which was in 2008, 9 timeframe, I believe, when we actually launched phone services and we did a bundle, triple play bundles, and we saw tremendous growth in our subscribers. And soon thereafter, AT&amp;T hit the market with its own video services and we started seeing a decline, so with additional competition. And last year has been some of one of the, last two years have been really huge significant impact because of the aggressive marketing campaigns. And we're, we have taken some action ourselves based on what I just said a few minutes ago. So that's sort of where we are. And for 10, for 11, 12, we're continuing to kind of show a decline based on trend. But then again, we've also budgeted a marketing campaign for 11, 12 as well. So we continue to pursue our marketing efforts. We show in our budgets a decline of about nearly 700 customers on the basic video side, but we continue to show growth in other areas of video products and also phone, internet and commercial services. So next slide, please. And then if you look at our revenue trend over the last 15 years as well, back in 97, 98, when we were just a cable TV customer, video service provider, we were generating about 4.4 million dollars in revenues. And today, with, based on our product diversification strategy that the city has pursued, we're at nearly 11 million dollars in, in revenue. So despite the fact that we've seen 5,000 customer loss in the basic cable side, the city has seen tremendous growth in revenue in its, in its enterprise over the last 15 years. Next slide, please. And at the last city council meeting, council member Salazar had inquired what our revenue composition was, and I kind of said 80, 20, video versus internet. And here's a more accurate depiction of what our composition is. Cable television represent about 64. All video services represent about 64% of our business. 26% of our business is internet, 4% is phone. Commercial services, which we just launched this year, represent about 2%. And the fees, franchise fees, copyright fees, phone, voice, tax fees, et cetera, represents about 4%. The franchise fee actually, in fact, goes to the city as an income to the city. So that's sort of our revenue composition today. Next slide, please. The, then also have a slide on the expenditure composition. And I keep talking about programming expenses going up and how the huge impact it has on our business and the rates that our customers pay. 42% of our expenditure actually is programming costs. So it has a huge impact on our business. And then the next thing is we're a service oriented business. We provide our services through our employees, which represent about 20%, 22% of our, our costs. And then the other costs are providing internet services, costs related to that, sales and marketing, local origination, et cetera. Next slide, please. And then I just wanted to show you a slide of the contributions or the, the transfers that cable television department makes to the general fund. Back in 1999, again, going back, we were just under a million dollars in, in contribution. It, the contributions represent equity earnings transfer, the 10% equity earnings transfer, the interdepartmental transfers for insurance, administrative services and other services provided by other departments, and the franchise fee. So back now in 11, 12, we're, we're showing about almost $2 million. So that has also nearly doubled over the last 15 years. Next slide, please. So based on the, the leadership and the understanding of the cable business and also the prudent and timely direction provided by the current city council and, and past city councils, we were able to kind of accomplish a lot of things over the last few years that the city should be, I think, I think, proud of. Over the last 15 years, you have developed a state-of-the-art, fiber-rich, all-digital cable system today. You've also diversified our product lineup from just a cable TV company to providing internet, phone and commercial services. We've grown the enterprise from a four and a half million dollar business to 11 million dollar business over the last 15 years. The city's income has gone up. The equity earnings transfer to the general fund has gone from approximately $400,000 to over a million dollars. And over the last 15 years, cable has contributed about 10.5 million dollars to general fund. Franchise income, franchise fee income has gone up as well from 203,000 fifteen years ago to about half a million annually today. So that's about five and, five and a half million dollars in additional revenue, income to the city's general fund. And also, the city's expanded and enhanced customer support services through contract services. As I've mentioned, we've continued to have only 18 employees in the cable, 19 employees in the cable department. We've had that for many, many years. Even though the city's business has grown 60% over the last eight years, we still continue to do that with the same number of staff. Part of it is because of the way we've done, outsourced some of our services. 24-hour technical support services outsourced to a company. We do our telephone service through another company and we have bare data for our commercial services. So with, with the contract service support, we're able to manage with the same number of staff and continue to provide the services that we do. And then we've created operating efficiencies through prudent negotiations. In the case of Comcast for the programming side, we've done cost containment. We've negotiated contracts by, some of the support contracts that we have, we pay less than some of the other companies pay for those type of services. And in terms of deploying new services, we've really looked at cost effectively, cost effective deploying our capital as well. The telephone service, we did it, we launched it with essentially zero capital, but today it's a 400,000 dollar business. So things like that. So all those things are good accomplishments that I think the city should be proud of. Next slide, please. So coming to today, and what we're proposing for budget for 2011, 12. Like I said, the budget is based on current trend in terms of subscribers. We're projecting a loss in basic cable subscribers, growth in other areas. It also includes the July 1 rate increase and service adjustments that the city council recently authorized and approved. And also, the budget for 10, 11, 11, 12 includes a cap on the equity earnings transfer. Generally, it's a 10, 10% of gross revenues. And, and right now, the projected revenues is 11.50,000. And it would have been 1,150,000, but we're proposing that it could be capped to 1 million dollars for 11, 12. Sort of provide some, given the fact that we've experienced decline in subscribers and to reduce the impact on our customers in terms of managing a rate relief to our customers, so to speak. So capping that would eliminate us having to pass that on to customers. So capping at a million dollars. And then some of the things we're pursuing for 11, 12, continue to do the direct sales campaign and look at other marketing opportunities to grow and win back our customers. Continue to market our commercial services to the business community. We put together a brochure, we put together introductory letter that's going to be going out and then right in time to hit for the next budget year. We'll be looking at some technology to enhance internet speeds for our customers and also to enhance the utilization of internet, just the backbones that we have, the capacities that we have. Basically, it means faster internet service to our customers as customers start using more and more online video. They want to see better, better, better speeds. We also will continue to evaluate the channel additions and enhancements and make enhancements to our video and demand content. And as we've done in the past, we'll continue to extend our cable plant to new developments as opportunities arise. And finally, oh, we'll also finally will make a final payment on our digital set-top box debt. box debt. And so we have two debts out there, one is the digital set-top box debt, and then we have the commercial services debt. The digital set-top box will be paid off at the end of next fiscal year, we'll have maybe two more payments, three more payments on the commercial services debt. And at that point in time, all the additional revenue from that will go towards funding the deficit, eliminating the deficit, and also perhaps creating a reserve again in the cable department fund. Next slide, please. So, at the last city council meeting, council member Salazar and the city council had inquired what, you know, what would the cable department look like, what's the outlook for cable department? You know, do you have a five-year plan type of thing? And it's really hard to kind of put numbers because it's, I'm really, again, we'll be guessing at numbers. It's a number, you know, I can say, I can put a high number and say, hey, will we be at that number, or put a low number and say, we'll really be pessimistic. I think what we need to look at is what's happening in the environment. And from that perspective, I think, as you know, there's a huge shift in how people are consuming video. I think that's a, you know, we need to recognize that. And I think more and more customers will switch to that, and I think there, as more and more service providers are emerging. Comcast in its own market has created Xfinity.net, dot com, dot net, where they're providing online video content right now. So there's some talk about Comcast perhaps launching it nationwide, so San Bruno Cable might end up being, and smaller companies like ourselves, might end up being a reseller of sorts for that, for that type of a service. So that might be something that's looming in the future. That's something, you know, we got to continue to pay attention to and continue to monitor, but continue aggressively market our services as well. And the good thing is that we have the biggest pipe in the home. As a broadband service provider, having the biggest pipe with the fiber and the coaxial cable into the home. So we'll continue to, as customers migrate from traditional cable television to video services, video, online video services, they will need higher and higher bandwidths to be able to do that. So us being the key broadband service provider in San Bruno will continue to have the biggest pipe in the home, and our, there will continue to be a boost in the internet business as you look into the future. So the pie chart will essentially shift a little bit, probably see declining in the video business, but growing in the internet side and the commercial side. And then, and obviously, the city's already prepared for this transition because we, couple, last year when we, last year, year before when we did the commercial services project, we enhanced our internet platform, we can do DOCSIS three-pointers services today, which is the higher capacity internet services. And essentially, as the demand increases, it's just a matter of adding additional network cards and, you know, reprovisioning our customers to enhance that quality of service for them. So we're prepared for that. Digital phone service will continue to be a cost-effective substitute for traditional telephone services. As you know, more and more people are using cellular services and getting your traditional telephone service. So essentially, our, our digital phone has been sort of a substitute, a price reducer, making it more competitive for people to switch. So I think that'll continue to progress into the future. So we'll continue to see growth in that area. And then commercial services, which we just launched, currently we're at about a hundred thousand dollars already in annual revenue, and we'll continue to double and grow that into the future. Like I said, debts will be paid off, generate additional cash flow and return, and perhaps creating a reserve into the future. So there's something, something to look for, or an outlook into the future as to what we can expect happening in our business. Next slide, please. So that sort of ends my presentation on the cable television side, and I was, if you have any questions on that, I might, I'll take it now, or I'll go through my presentation, go through the presentation. The next department or the division is the local origination division. Essentially, continue to do cablecast city meetings like we have done, we continue to air, cover and air city events and festivities, continue to produce and cablecast programming. We've done the senior moments, the storytime, and most recently, last year, we launched What or What's Happening Around Town. We've done several episodes of that. And I have to compliment Miriam, who does a great job of producing those, single-handedly directing and doing a lot of the work, and I think she has some help from other departments in terms of arranging the content, but as far as developing, producing, putting it on there, it's all done by her. She does a great job. And then basically, we maintain our message board, putting on PSAs and city other messages. The next slide, please. As a technology support division, we continue to have three, only three people working in that department. They work tirelessly, very hard, they support two hundred and fifty users, they support all the network infrastructure that we have, all the telephone systems, the twenty-plus applications that the city utilizes, all the copiers, all the printers, they maintain that for us. And essentially, for goals for two thousand and eleven, twelve, you've probably seen this before, the implementation of a business continuity plan, essentially it's a disaster recovery solution that we talked about in the past. We were not able to implement it last year because we needed to do additional research. That technology continues to evolve, change in terms of using virtualized machines and different type of sort of technology. So we wanted to make sure that we spend the, spend the money correctly and get the right technology, be able to do that in a, in a cost-effective, efficient, long-term solution manner. So I think we've done additional research on that and we're probably prepared to do launch, deploy something like that this year. Upgrade, additional changes, basically upgrading Office Suite, we're using Office two thousand, we want to upgrade to two thousand and ten so that we can have, collaborate with different, share files, collaborate with other users. And then just, you know, upgrades to certain other applications that the city uses, Tracket and Fire RMS applications. And then I mentioned already the support that our employees provide. So I'll take any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions on cable-related items? Ken?
Mr. Mayor, Tenzin, what is your honest assessment of the commercial, the start of the commercial service, data and phone?
So far, we've done, in my opinion, we've done good, we've done, I won't say excellent, but we've done good. We have generated about fifteen business customers, large and small. We have the city, we have a couple other large businesses, we're pursuing a couple of other additional businesses. So in my opinion, it's a, it's a right decision we made to launch commercial services. And I, and I, what I'm seeing is that there's about fifteen hundred plus businesses in San Bruno, large and small, and currently, we've just tapped the tip of the iceberg in exploring the market. So with continued marketing and outreach, I think that business is going to continue to grow.
So when you say an aggressive campaign, is that, again, just going to each business, door-to-door?
Well, we got to do, our initial plan is to do, send a brochure out to everybody. We have an introductory letter and a brochure that's going to go out to all businesses in San Bruno, and then we're going to follow it up with, you know, essentially knocking, we knock on businesses' doors and we go in there and introduce ourselves and get a business. So that's what we do. And also part of the door-to-door campaign, we might include them to go to businesses and knock on business doors as well and sell the business products, so.
In addition to that, and maybe if you need to elaborate, you can, Tenzin, the cable staff works very closely with community development to be able to be the first person in the door when a new businesses, a new business or a new development is coming into town, and also is, is working very closely with the property managers, property owner managers at the Bay Hill Office Park. And as you know, there's a wide variety, again, of businesses, large and small, that are very technology sophisticated, and although we, I believe we still do not have cable plants serving all of those buildings.
We have.
Oh, we do have, okay. There is a, you know, an opportunity to interface with the leasing agents and the people who know what businesses are coming and going and how they, you know, what their needs are. So that's, those are other business development methods that the department is using.
We're also pursuing a couple of large accounts. I don't want to say the names over the air. We also recently got another call from another customer who wants to do a point-to-point from here all the way to San Jose and things like that. So those are all opportunities to, high revenue opportunities as well.
What I'd like to suggest is that we get a, you know, maybe a crash course of the basics, and then maybe tie it in with the, with the chamber, you know, so that we can be, you know, at least the initial contacts, you know, and be able to talk at the, maybe the same, at a technical level, you know, before we can send them, you know, to, to your staff to, you know, to look at options.
Absolutely, pleased to do that.
Good. Anyone else? Rico?
With the council's permission, any line item questions, I'm going to, if that's okay, forward those after the meeting.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay. The two, the only, the, I can go back and go by.
No, no, no.
Okay, so.
Just agreeing with you.
The only thing I wanted to know, two things, is on the, would we be looking at, in the future, near future, I don't know, upgrading the cable system? I mean, I know we've gone through that, what, twice, if I can recall, maybe I'm wrong. But again, is there a time or frame that we would need to look at that again?
All right. The most recent upgrade was when we went to all digital. Essentially, we have a seven hundred and fifty megahertz plant, and we have, by going all digital, we have essentially expanded our capacity to immensely. And I think at this stage, I don't think we are out of capacity at this time. So there, I think a lot of the cable companies are not going to go out and do the, the traditional cable upgrades, where they go out and change all their electronics and, you know, that kind of stuff to get more bandwidth. They're using new, just in case, just like we did just recently with the all-digital solution, where changing infrastructure within the head end, being able to generate additional bandwidth, using digital technology, using the existing plant to generate additional bandwidth. So in terms of that, we've done practically everything except for doing something called Switch Digital Video, which is another technology where you get additional bandwidth by expanding the digital capacity that we already have. So that's one more thing we can do. Beyond that, it would be going fiber to the home, taking fiber infrastructure all the way to the home. Currently, we have a hybrid fiber coax system where fiber goes out from the head end to a certain point in the community, and from that point in the community goes out coaxial cable to into the home. So the next step to get additional bandwidth would be going fiber to the home. So that's something that may or may not be necessary. I mean, if, if the way people consume video changes from traditional cable television to internet, then we have plenty of bandwidth to do internet, internet services, there's no need to upgrade upline to do any of that kind of stuff. So I don't foresee us having to do an upgrade, maybe on the next, several years. I, I, you know.
And just, and last thing is, is do, or do we utilize some of this equipment or upgrades? Do we have equipment reserve that you use? I know sometimes in the past, a particular device went out, and we were questioning, why don't we have that in equipment reserve?
The cable department's equipment reserve sort of, we quit reserving several years ago. Part of the reason why that occurred was there was a huge, tremendous need to keep up with the change in technology, starting, I don't know, five, seven years ago, with the video on demand launch, HD, you know, phone. I mean, there's tremendous amounts of activity that took place over time, and the city had not reserved sufficient, did not have sufficient capital in reserves in order to do all those things. So that's why we incurred the debts, to purchase a set-top box, et cetera. So currently, we're at a stage where we continue to do business, where we are slowly paying back the debt, we always pay back the first debt, and then eventually, our goal is to pay those debts off. And as we pay the debts off, which is about eight hundred thousand dollars a year, that's eight hundred thousand dollars once that's paid off in additional cash flow that we would have. So slowly, that would result in creating a reserve. So currently, there's no reserve, we just pay as, sort of a pay-as-you-go as, as there's need arises, we budget it and we pay for it.
Thank you.
Michael?
No questions.
Irene?
I just want to say, looking at the slides that Tenzin had and showing the trends that we've gone over in the last twenty years, cable has been so responsive to changing markets, they're extremely adaptable, and I really admire all the thought and flexibility they show. So it's, it's a hard thing to do what they're doing, they have a limited market. I just, I just want to let them know I appreciate that, so. And I do have one question. Tenzin, you said that we have over two hundred people responding to the card mailer marketing technique.
That's right.
Is that what you expected more, or did you just not have any expectations and were hoping for something?
We did not have, I didn't have an expectation at all for this marketing. I knew that, I wanted to get a feel for what, what kind of impact a good offer might have. So the results that it has produced, we're satisfied with the results. I think two hundred and eighty-four new sales, because we really targeted new customers only. So I think that really, really shows that having a good offer will generate customers to come back to San Bruno Cable.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Irene.
We didn't have, we didn't have email fifteen years ago.
So, very briefly, there are just two remaining, and these are basically summary items across all the departments. We have not discussed in detail, but you've probably seen on your review of the budget that there are, as there have been in previous years, a few items that were proposing for replacement through the equipment reserve. I won't go through them in detail, they're provided here on the handout. You'll see that several of these are, and particularly the larger ticket items, are reserved in the enterprise funds, a few relatively lower-cost items are reserved in the general fund. Any of these items that are over the city manager's expenditure threshold will come and come back to the city council for specific review and decision-making. And as you see, there are a number of vehicles that are included in this year's equipment replacement fund requests. All of those vehicles and all of the equipment that is being proposed for replacement has reached or exceeded its useful life and its reserve, its, its reserve calculations. In other words, they have been fully funded in the reserve fund. I did receive one question, I just want to clarify, where you see on this slide, the vacuum combination unit, that is a single unit, and it is proposed to be shared both in its operation and in its cost between the stormwater and the wastewater divisions. That is something that we, we have done a few times, and it is a cost-efficient way, obviously, to operate our, our machinery and equipment. Unless there's any questions by the city council.
I'll forward my.
I would move on just very quickly to a summary of the supplemental request items that I discussed and that I identified there would be a few of these items. You've heard about each of these in the departmental presentations, and I'd be happy to take any questions about those. We will be including those for your specific consideration as part of your budget action on Tuesday night.
Any specific questions?
Through the chair, on the cost allocation plan, is that also the same plan that outlined cost recovery issues, you know, through, throughout every department?
Okay, please. The last cost allocation plan that we did included also a development fee study, I think, so the two were linked last time. And this amount would be sufficient to do both the cost allocation study and the development fee study review.
Okay, so what, I mean, is this a discount, is this a lesser amount, fee for this, for this plan than what we did five years ago? Or has there been significant changes in five years that we would need to do a, you know, full-blown, you know, study?
The cost allocation studies are typically just done on a five-year basis because staff changes, reorganizations that occur, the current cost allocation mechanism that's in place may not accurately reflect the job duties that are currently being performed, so it's typically done on a five-year basis.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, I mean, and that's, I don't want to downplay what the importance of it, but are we getting fifteen thousand dollars worth? Is it effective? Is it something that we've, because we didn't have it, I think the last one we had was, that was the first one, five years ago.
Correct.
Yeah. And so, as long as I've been on the council, we never had one. I mean, did, I mean, what is, I mean, sell me on, you know, this new, you know, on renewing it after five years.
Well, I think it's important that we do update the existing study that's in place so that we can defend it when we're questioned from auditors and so forth. So having an updated study is important for those. Updating the existing study and not necessarily engaging in a full new study, new cost allocation plan, that is a possibility. in a full new study, new cost allocation plan, that is a possibility, and we could actually look into engaging the same person who did the last study, and it could be done possibly at a lesser cost.
Would that, would you recommend that? I mean, this, I'm just trying to.
I think as a starting, as a starting point, yes, I, we haven't gone into fully investigating what the possibilities are on this.
Okay.
I was just going to add that although the city probably operated without, did operate without a cost allocation plan for many, many years, and that is actually not unusual, it is the necessary and standard practice in our business these days, and actually, for probably quite a while prior to when the city actually entered its first plan, the, and I would say that as fees become, that are raised and are increasingly utilized on a full cost recovery for direct individual service type of arrangement, as this city has utilized, it's increasingly important to make sure that you can justify the costs of the service, that, or the cost of the fee, and match it precisely to the service that's being formed, that's the, that's the utility of of the analysis. The reason, in our particular case, other than just a five-year is a good parameter for consideration of update, is the fact that our structure of operations and our cost of operations have actually changed substantially over the last five years, where in each of those years, we've made pretty significant changes, both to the way that we deliver service, as well as to the cost of those individual services. And I would say, it's good insurance on us to make sure, number one, that you're doing it correctly, and to be able to demonstrate that the fee is is precisely matched to the cost of the service.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that I, I think we should all be conscious of, because, one, we don't want to give away services, we do want to pay, have, you know, our staff be paid for what they do, but on the other hand, we have to also look at what, you know, what the residents, you know, are being faced with, too. I mean, I know in this, the last ten years, every city has dramatically increased their costs, you know, to the public, and whether it's in, you know, building fees, or whether it's in other services or whatever, it's like, geez, it used to be this, it used to be that. And so, I guess the argument is, yes, we did give it away, or we didn't get paid enough for it in the past, and so we're getting it, but is it really, and this is what I really want to know, is, are we really, you know, getting paid for what, what we do, and is the public, is, you know, the public not getting gouged or something? All right, I'll look at that study when it comes.
Any other questions or comments from the city council?
Through the chair.
Michael?
Just to follow up on council member Avara's questions, the one, the one thing I would question is just the timing of doing that, that sort of allocation study at this time, because there are so many situations right now that are not what would be steady state, and if it's something that we would want to implement for another five years, I know there's a lot of activities taking place around the Glenview restoration, which are relatively short-term, which impact allocations, because resources are being used differently, the impact of what's happening with our, our store, our sewer systems, the repairs that we're having to do there, which are really being accelerated and wouldn't normally be steady state, and because of that, I think now maybe not be a good time to analyze the allocations.
We will definitely take a look at that, I would, I would need to rely on the staff to, and perhaps in some early discussion, perhaps with the folks who did the original study, to really flesh out that issue, I think that's an excellent point, and we can take a look at that.
Okay, yeah, you know, the other side of that is, because we have so many dramatic changes.
Right.
We really do need to change the allocation, at the same time, if it's, if it's something that needs to last a few years, then it's, it's not.
Right.
Through the chair, I'll pass on, on the last two presentations, my question to city manager, but one of them is also on the, the allocation costs as well.
Irene, any final questions or comments?
No, I'm good, thanks.
All right, thank you, there's nothing else, we don't have a closed session, and just prior to adjournment, I want to say, and I feel I can say on behalf of this entire city council, to Connie Jackson, the city manager, all department head, staff, and employees, you always do a great job, you always do a great job, this year, you have done an incredible job. As I had the very distinct pleasure of telling our former governor last October, when he asked me, how's it going, I said, we are in fact running the city of Glenview and the city of San Bruno, and Mr. Governor, with your cuts and the state of this economy, we're having difficulty running the city of San Bruno, but as a team, and this has been a team effort, we have done it, and we will continue to do it. So, on behalf of this entire city council, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned, until next Tuesday.